All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is going to be a little different. It's going to be a town hall style, but we all stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please, to get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, did we get roll call from Commissioner?
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Flossin.
Here.
Commissioner Lovely.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
Next, we're up to Communications. Janet and Ted Carmody, could you read that in the minutes, please?
Says Kristin, "My husband and I moved to Marine City about 25 years ago. We were drawn to the city on the river and all the charming houses. We reside in a house on North William that is well over 100 years old. The old City Hall building is a logical place to move the city offices. It is the heart of the town and is a beautiful structure. I realize that this building has its challenges, but in the end, a well-used and well-loved structure will benefit us all." And Janet and Ted Carmody?
Thank you. Next, I was wondering if the...
I'd move to accept and file communications.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I would like to actually see if we could remove the public comment and just move it down with the whole idea of the meeting is for public comment. And I was wondering if I could get that motion through that.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, we can move on to the new business, which is the future of City Hall and Community Center. We do have a few, a few rules we'd like to do is make sure everyone has their phones shut off. Please wait to be recognized by myself and identify yourself, please. Allow everyone a chance to speak for, or try and just go once so we can get through and let everyone have a chance to speak that wants to speak. Treat everybody with respect. Please stay on topic because what we're talking about is old City Hall and future, the future of it. Focus on future plans. Please limit any side conversations you may have and please try and, let's try and stay on the constructive side. Anyone like to, yes?
Can you make sure everyone give me your address and state your name clearly so I can have it for the record, please?
All right, anyone like to get us started?
Why don't I just kind of do a quick summary of kind of part of the reason why we're here? For those of you that don't know me, I'm Elaine Levin, I'm the City Manager here and working with City Commission. You know, we've been in the Guy Community Center now for 12 years on a temporary basis. And this is something that I think this commission is really up for the challenge to move forward and find a way to take care of the situation that we have between the community center and city offices and find a solution to fix a longstanding issue. And we wanted to have this meeting to bring as many people together and just talk about constructive ideas, some of the hurdles that we face with some of the buildings and other issues, and just kind of use this as an opportunity to get feedback from people and really talk about it. Currently, we, we own the Guy Center, which is where we have our offices. At one point in time, was the community center. It was donated, actually, I'm sorry, it was used, it was purchased by funds that came from the Guy family to purchase that building. So, one of the things about the Guy Center is that the designation for community center is not necessarily tied to that building. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. We did a thorough research in the meeting minutes to figure that one out. Also, we own 300 Broadway. Recently, we did approve a lease portion of that with River Rattine Zone. And then, the rest of the building, we do have a potential lease that Friends of City Hall has proposed at a past meeting that's been tabled at this point pending discussion that we have from this meeting. Some of the other options that potentially could be on the table are either finding some other building that might better suit our needs or building a building. Obviously, all of these are going to have costs. We have issues with the Guy Center currently because we have ADA access, we have parking issues with the fact that it's downtown and things are picking up. We have issues from a staff perspective, that all of our storage is down in the basement and it's not that easy to access, especially if we have someone that say could be in a disabled state. 300 Broadway needs a lot of work. At one point in time, there were estimates to the tune of, I think it was two to three million. This was, I think, more so for his, both historic restoration. There are other options that could potentially be considered for that. There are other buildings that we could potentially look at to purchase, refurbish, rent, any number of things. And we do have some other areas that we could potentially build a space, whether it be just a meeting space, just a community space, just office or combination thereof. As I said, everything, even just staying put and getting rid of a community center is going to cost money because we will have to do improvements to the building to make it at least work for the public. Haven't really identified a way to make it work better for the staff at this time. But, those are the issues that we're dealing with and, as I said, we're, we're here. City Commission is open, they want to hear and listen to any comments and feedback that people have and move forward from here and hopefully get to a resolution.
All right, anybody would like to start?
Is it okay if I read my, my statement? I would do better with that rather than try extemporiously. My name is Judy White. I live at 8757 Anchor Bay Drive in Clay Tomship. I'm a half-owner of Marine City Gunsmith here in Marine City and that creative mine tied to this community a little over 12 years ago. I'm already on record as saying that I would love to see city government back into a restored City Hall. I also admitted that it was financially impossible for the city to restore the building at this If Friends of City Hall leased the building, we would have the best chance of anyone or any group of raising the millions of dollars needed for restoration through foundation Foundation grants go to nonprofits that lease their own buildings and have a business plan. We have a plan which EDA says is good and we hope to finalize a lease soon. After visiting Howell, Michigan to tour the Howell Opera House, we have an expanded vision of what a nonprofit like Livingston Arts Council can do to start a business, make money and save an historic building. It is exactly what we want to do. City Hall can become City Hall Center and it can function as a venue for all manner of celebrations, ceremonies and civic activities. Even unrestored, City Hall has the history, style, uniqueness and charm that no other place can claim. By happy coincidence, it is all the things that contemporary venue shoppers want in terms of a special, one-of-a-kind place. Once restored, it will become a showplace renowned for its handsomeness. It also can house multiple small office spaces in the basement, main floor and mezzanine and as additional sources of income. Tons seeking an ambiance or significant address will certainly find it here. Following the Howell example, it is possible to develop a main floor rental venue with only partial restoration of the building. As required, our business plan has an exit strategy that includes the formation of a foundation dedicated to protecting City Hall and funding the structural needs of the building if need be. As the lease terminates, we want to hand back to the city a fully functional and beautiful City Hall. Perhaps at the moment, city government can come home at that time and reconnect with a tradition and heritage, rejoining the flow of history in that building. Some of the ideas I have heard for moving city offices out of the Guy Center to other locations, like an addition to the library, are sensible and practical. But it does seem like city departments may end up a bit scattered and a united and visible center of government will disappear. I guess I'm rather old-school in that I admire and embrace the symbol of a City Hall and its centralizing function in a community. I am aware of the shortcomings of the Guy Center, housing city employees and serving the public and especially the handicapped, and I know the details of the birth of Guy bequest and thus the infraction of the intended use of the building. But I would still like to offer a heretical idea. I propose that you construct a second story on the Guy Center and install an elevator, remodel the main floor and include high-quality staff, restrooms and a break area. I do not know if the expense of this process would equate with what would be spent on new construction by the library, but anything done to the Guy Center will definitely increase in value. Consider this as an investment for the future, since a future sale of the building could certainly command a very high price. Maintain the government there until such time that Historic City Hall is restored or city finances can afford construction of a new building, perhaps located next to the Courthouse Building on the highway. I see no real problem in staying at the Guy Center for a few more years. No one is making an organized concerted effort to force the government out of the building. The community is not bereft of activities locales, since Washington Life Center has emerged as a very effective venue for seniors and is available to the community for other activities. It just seems to me that in the long run, whatever is built behind the library will ultimately be vacated for another location. It would be a kind of waste of resources, whereas modifying the Guy Center would last and continue to serve even when the tenants change. Thank you.
Heather Bauchrim, 6294 River Road, Santa Ana. I would like to address the problem of the Guy Center and making it more accessible for the citizens and probably also for the people who work there. I think that if you added another story, it's probably quite a bit of expense. It also is in its own historic building. There are ways to get from one floor to another without using stairs or, or the traditional elevator. As the former owner of the Heather House, I had concerns about the fact that we weren't handicapped accessible and we weren't required to be as a bed and breakfast. But I did look into the kinds of lifts that can be available for buildings to go from one floor to another. For the Guy Center, you would need one for the outside to go in, or you could go in via the lower level, but that wouldn't be very practical for most people. As far as getting to the basement, you could use these types of lifts for the same thing. They are made both indoor and outdoor, wheelchair accessible, and they can go as, I think as high as 14 feet. I think the cost would be a lot less. All you really need to do is have a place, like for the front entrance into the Guy Center, you would need a platform that would be extended up at the very top so that a person going up on a wheelchair or standing on it going up could then walk directly from that lift onto the platform. Usually, they have a side where you can walk in from one direction and another side to walk out on another direction, if you can understand what I'm saying. But I didn't look into the cost of these, but I know that they are really much more economical than a regular elevator. And maybe that's something you could look into. I think the Guy Center, for the people who work there, other than having to go downstairs to the basement, walking down, it's a lovely place to be, to work. Got a lovely view. I think maybe you could work with what you have now at, at not a huge cost if you would look into these elevators. I think I kept all my paperwork and if you are interested, I'd be glad to get it to you. Thank you.
Somebody else?
Ray Squires, 211 Michigan, Marine City. I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing tonight because it expresses whether we agree or disagree with any of the comments, that it's all about freedom of speech, First Amendment rights. My take is that we need a new facility, a brand-new facility. How are we going to get the finances to do it? Well, I think one way that we can do that, make that possible and make it doable now is to get rid of TIFA, because that's taken a lot of money out that we could have spent on a new City Hall. Whether we want to add on to the library, put all of the offices there, make a new facility. I've said this before, but I'll repeat it since we have new faces tonight. My wife and I are in the Michigan Historical Society and they know that we live in Marine City because we go around the state. And they say, "Wow, you've got a great place, Marine City." And then, then the deeks come. The deeks come. Wait a minute, it's 12 years and you're, you're still meeting in your fire hall? It's 12 years. They say, hey, you know. And we love this town, but it's time to move forward. You know, we look at St. Clair. St. Clair with their beautiful facility, it's absolutely beautiful facility. They have meeting rooms, you can meet with the, the officials there. That's just an example. You know, I think that our city employees deserve, you know, a nice working environment. Yes, it's wonderful to look at the river. That's, that's nice. But, you know, a new facility, I think, would be a blessing to all of the residents of Marine City and also to the, the employees of Marine City, something that we can be proud of. Instead of, you know, trying to figure out, what are we going to do with City Hall? What are we going to do with the Guy Center? Well, let's focus on a new facility, a new facility. And as I said, I think a good first step is to get rid of TIFA. Thank you.
I'm up at the North William Street, Marine City. I want to share a story with you and then try and tie it into the rest of the thing tonight. My wife was actively a horse rider years ago. We used to truck them all over the place and one of the places we went most often was Louisville, Kentucky. And I think we visited there three or four times. Now, I wasn't into horses, still am not, but I was into golf. So, I went and played golf while we got everybody settled and I went and played golf. It turns out, in the city of Louisville, there are nine city-owned golf courses, seven of which are 18 holes, two of which were nine-hole courses. And I happened to talk to one of the pro shop managers one day playing there, and I said, "How could a city of Louisville get nine golf courses?" And he said, "Early on, the city fathers decided that they would lease out land to private investors, not 501s or anything like that, but they would lease out these lands." And the term of their lease was 30 years. You have 30 years, develop it, do what you will, and at the end of that 30 years, it comes back to the city. And over a period of so many years, they ended up with nine golf courses, which I took great advantage of while I was there. I think the lease opportunity that Friends of City Hall is proposing and the one that you've already approved with the River Rattine Zone is, is a way to go. And it's a 10-year lease and so forth in that particular building. I would love to see city offices back in that building. And I would point out that we've gone through in this whole country why communities and cities have paid a heavy price along with the rest of us for the economic crunch of both six and on, and it's very difficult to get money and no monies are available for restoration of public buildings and so forth. A lease to a, a group like Friends is a 501-qualified would open up a gamut of foundation loans and leases and grants and make those more readily available for redevelopment. Now, I, I have to speak to, to what I call a vehicle for investment. If all this talk about a new building or renovating the old one or putting a second story on the Guy Center, all of that is cost-driven, as Elaine pointed out, and very, very cost-driven. Construction's expensive. The city needs a vehicle to safeguard itself for investment of this kind. And the question is, we move forward toward a decision in April on what to do with TIFA, whether to expand and continue it, extend it, or to discontinue it. My personal feelings are that if TIFA is gone, there's no vehicle for investment. TIFA's provided matches for grants as they came available and they've provided program kickstarts and many other things, to name just a few. TIFA has been viable investment vehicle in the city. Without it, I'm concerned that if grants do come available or bond outs become available, if the bond gets voted down, the project goes down. If the bond gets voted in, the city becomes responsible for the bond. In the past, TIFA has paid several bonds on behalf of the city and undertaken them and underwritten them and might very possibly consider underwriting another one, I would think, but for this kind of project. But I would encourage people to think long and hard before they do away with a program like TIFA because you need a vehicle for investment, no matter what it is, no matter what it is. And nobody here in this room, I dare you to deny the progress of this city in the last 10 years, what it looked like 10 years ago and what it looks like, looks like now. We had up to 40% empty storefronts in this town, particularly down on Water Street, and that's been a target of concentrated effort. But Parker Corridor is going to be the next target of massive redevelopment and, and quite withstanding, some of it you as an individual are going to like, some of it you are not going to like. That tends to get the way of all projects go. So, like it or not, the vehicle for investment has to be maintained. And I think the lease thing is great and I hope you will act in favor of the lease of Friends of City Hall because I really believe that's the way to go. In a 10-year period, at the end of that lease, you get a building back, hopefully, that's restored by then, if we open up that avenue. Thanks.
Keith Jagan, Mayton, 9 Water Street. I also think it's a bad idea to discuss or to consider even the dissolution of TIFA. I was on the board three years, starting in, I think it was 2004, before they abandoned City Hall. And there's a lot of things I could say to defend TIFA, the things that they've done for this city that are good. But I think the best thing to remember is that this city got to where it is during the deepest recession of my lifetime. Everybody else struggled. What we did is decided on the TIFA board to do whatever it took to get people here to our city that didn't live here. So, the businesses have support, but not just to spread town. Of course, everybody knows, living on the river, you miss half the circle. So, we knew that, when I was on the TIFA board, we discussed it and knew that the, the best thing to do is to try to make this city a destination city, and we did. And I'll argue that point with anybody. I heard before that somebody said that it was just a good time for development. It wasn't. It was a good time for nothing. But, the TIFA board did invest. And as far as the TIFA board being dissolved and then using the money for a City Hall, while I was on the TIFA board and the city decided to abandon the City Hall for reasons that didn't pan out, but it really proved to be not true completely. The building was supposed to be collapsed by now, but anyway, long story short, their plan was to use TIFA money to build a new City Hall. So, I would suggest if you wanted to go that route, then you talk to the TIFA board and fund a new City Hall. But to dissolve it, just seems ridiculous to me after what this city's turned out to be. I, I'm very proud of my service on the TIFA board because I look around and say, wow, pretty cool town. Thank you.
Before we move on, I'd like to stay off the TIFA because that's a whole other topic. Let's just work on, on ideas for new City Hall or current City Hall, whatever we decide to go for. So, keep it just stay on topic.
Larry Westcorn, Ridge City. My long citizen here. I'd just like to compliment the leadership of the graduate city for the last 15, 20 years, whatever. Our city today, guys, is one of the most visited cities in this year. We have our storefronts, we don't have a mall like St. Clair, we don't have a mall, malls like Kelvin. Those, those cities are vacant. And I think, I think our leadership should be congratulated here, you know, because they've done a very good job. Very proud of Ridge City and their commissioners and mayor and that, so, and the police department and everything else.
My name is Louise Futal. I live at 535 North Main, in Marine City, obviously. We've lived here about seven years. It has been remarkable how many changes there have been in those seven years, and they've been in the right direction. The City Hall is a gathering place and should be a gathering place in my mind. Let me tell you just a short story of something that happened to me. I was ordering something and giving my address to the person who was taking the order. And when I got to the point that I lived in Marine City, this woman said, "Oh, Marine City." She said, "I've been there," and this was about seven years ago, just after we had gotten here. And she said, "You know, I know two places there." And I said, "What are they?" And she said, "The Heather House." And I said, "Oh, that's right down the street from us." And she said, "In your City Hall." She said, "That's so beautiful." And then, she continued to talk. And she said, "You know, my husband and I had a family reunion on the East Coast." And she said, "On our way back, we decided not to take any of the major highways." She said, "So, we drove on roads," and she said, "We went into little towns and so on and so forth." And she said, "You know, it was remarkable." She said, "Almost all these little towns had these pretty city halls." But she said, "You know, not like your City Hall." She said, "They were being used as city halls." And she said, "Some of them were used as city halls and some of them were used as visitor centers." And she said, "It was really very pretty and we enjoyed it." And then, I finished my order and that was the end of the conversation. But it's always stuck in my head because it is a beautiful building. It is in a place where... It is in a place where you come into Marine City and you see it. And it is something that defines the city. The question is, with the size of City Hall, can you realistically move City Hall offices comfortably into City Hall? Now, in my non-mathematical mind, I would think you could if you had a good person designing how to define the areas, et cetera, and so forth. And then after you get finished with the City Hall staff, then you have to go upstairs to the Opera House. The other thing that I've heard in my own ears, not by somebody else telling me about it, is about the Opera House. When we've had people there playing music, they have said, "You know, we'd really like to record here, because the acoustics are perfect." And for those of you who have wandered into the building and haven't been afraid that it was going to fall on your head, you won't know if you were sitting up there that the sound is beautiful. And if you were around when they were doing the outside of the building and you saw how the building was constructed, you know that it is in good shape. When they built this building, they built it forever. And I think we ought to take care of it forever. But I hope that all of us together in this city can come up with a definitive plan on how to use all the space in that building as a community center, as a City Hall office, if that can be done. Please, let's think about it and work together.
Anyone else? Yes, Judy.
Yes. Judy Jobin, 5691 River Road, East China. My husband and I have been business owners in this community for years. We are not currently, but I am still very active in community organizations. And one of the things I want to point out to everybody in this room is that this is a discussion that we have visited before about whether or not to build a new building or to restore this building. And city, the dollar-for-dollar, at the time when they were looking back when Keith was referring to the Tifa plan to build a new building, where they were about the same dollars, restoration of this building to build a new building. But the number that you really wanted to pay attention to was that the new building had a lifespan of about forty years. The same dollars put into this building will give you many times more than forty years. This is almost a no-brainer as far as the dollars you're going to spend, where you want to put them. And certainly, Tifa is a vehicle that I was thinking you could even consider bonding out through Tifa those dollars needed. And Tifa could pay the bond fees.
Any others, please?
Joe Moran, 77 Pleasant Street. First of all, I think it's sinful that the city allowed 300 Broadway to deteriorate to the extent that it had. That's laid at the feet of the city administration at that time, but also to the voters of this town, that, you know, "I've lived here all my life," they say, "but, you know, are you paying attention to what's happening to your town?" Would London tear down Big Ben? New York City, would they do away with the Empire State Building? Marine City is a historic town. It's a historic venue within the state of Michigan. And without argument, 300 Broadway is the city's most historic and most beautiful edifice. Not to restore it, I cannot even think of the words. It sinful goes beyond, it's not even close. The best option we have seen to date is the lease to Friends of City Hall. No one else has come forward with a plan. No one else has come forward with any funding or the ability to get funding besides the Friends of City Hall. Will they be able to accomplish all that they anticipate? I can't say. But there's nothing else going on at this time. And the building is, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to sit on our hands and continue to debate, have town hall meetings, and not do anything about it. We have a chance to move forward. I think we should take it. In the interim, we have the Guy Center. It is not adequate as a fully functioning City Hall. There's certainly no place to meet there. But it's our current City Hall. It's right in the middle of town. It's a lovely little building. I think we should investigate making changes to that building, either laterally or vertically, to accommodate the needs of, at the very least, the city administration. If we continue to meet here for city council meetings or other commission meetings, you know, that's the way it goes. But first and foremost, we have an existing structure. We should see what we can do to alter it. I think Judy is very correct. Any additions and improvements we make to that building are dollars in the bank. If indeed 300 Broadway becomes viable as a fully functioning City Hall, we can certainly move city administration over there. And then, whatever happens with the Guy Center, we have an improved facility that certainly will bring more money into the city. Looking at new construction or a different building, I think should be our third option, because, number one, I think that City Hall should be in the downtown area. And number two, I think, I don't know for sure, but I think perhaps making changes to the Guy Center would be more cost-effective than moving outside of the downtown area to either try to renovate an existing building, which certainly I don't see any there that have the charm of the Guy Center. And certainly, new construction, again, it's outside of the city center. It's removed from the area that it should be in. So, let's go ahead with the lease. Let's go ahead with an exploration of updating the Guy Center. Let's look at, are there buildings available? But, and I'm always charging city commission to get the ball rolling, let's do something. I'd like to see some resolutions at the next meeting with concrete plans to move forward in the direction of getting this done. It's twelve years. Get her done. Thank you.
Hi, Georgia Phalen, Sixters Road, Four Lozong Road, Contraville. I'll stand up because I've got a sore throat, so I can't speak for a lot. I have a couple of questions, actually, that I thought might serve as good background here if there are answers to them. And Mr. Mayor, maybe there's something, you know. I was wondering if the city has done anything in the way of an inventory of possible locations that could be leased or purchased for the city offices to go into? Like, do we even know if there's something suitable out there?
There are a couple that have been brought to us in the past, and a couple we have looked at.
So, there's still some options out there? So, that is an option. Because I thought, you know, if there isn't anything that's appropriate, then that's not available. So, okay, so there are. And the other thing that I brought up, that was brought up twice, I think, people talked about adding a second story possibly to the Guy Center to make that work. And I don't know if we know if that's physically viable with the building as it exists. Bill, do you have any idea? Because I know that foundations have to be there, and the structure has to be right, and you just can't plot a second floor and everything.
Well, the foundations have to be. That building probably could have a second story on. We'd have to look and see it when they built it. The headers, because there's so many windows in it, that they've got headers properly set up in that area and stuff. But a thing that's coming across that nobody knows about, the class that I have just taken, is ADA. And ADA has done a new standard. They actually passed, they actually put it off to be passed, and it got turned down. But in that, and they're still fighting for it, but in that form. And if they get that passed the way they want it passed for ADA, there will be no grandfather. Everyone will have to comply.
Okay, so.
So, everyone that doesn't have an elevator or doesn't have one will have to put elevators in.
Does that pertains to public buildings or all public, commercial?
All businesses, all commercial buildings.
Commercial, okay.
Not residential. Residential's honored.
That's a different thing. Okay. So, I was just wondering, because I know, because that's what we do, and I know you can't just always go in and plot a second floor into a building. So, I didn't know. So, some research would have to be done to find out if that's even viable. Right. Okay. So, then I just want to address the Friends of City Hall's lease option, which it seems to me, I don't think everybody wants to see that building go away. Thank goodness, a long time ago, that's off the table. So, it's going to be there, owned by somebody, functioning somehow. A section of it's already leased out on a short-term lease. And now, the Friends of City Hall would like to also lease that out. And I do know, because I've been involved with this thing, building and stuff, or... It started with nineteen hundred and something, so I'm thinking that it's getting close to twenty years, that there's funding available for nonprofits that's not available to cities and such. So, with a lease, Friends of City Hall could actually access things that the city couldn't do. I think we'd be on our own dime pretty much if, you know, the city would be if they were going to renovate that building. But it seems to me kind of a best-case scenario is that the maintenance of the building and the ongoing costs and all of that would then fall to Friends of City Hall. So, that would be off the city's shoulders. So regardless of what was done for a new city building, if it stayed there, leased someplace else, buy someplace else, or possibly use part of this building, at least the city would be unencumbered by the maintenance and upkeep and functions, you know, the development of that building. So, to me, it seems like the best-case scenario, looking directly at that structure, you know, for the city's bottom line. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
We do have another issue with the Guy Center right now on the fire side of it, because you actually have to change floors for your secondary exit. And that's kind of been allowed because it's a temporary, well, temporary, but we really need to, if we were to stay there, would have to put a secondary exit on the first floor. You can't have, it's very loosely written that to allow that right now. I think Fire Chief would agree with that. I didn't bring you in on this show. But we wouldn't allow that on new construction, on any commercial building. I just wanted to bring that up, because then that would change the traffic flow if we had to put in another exit. And the way that building's constructed with the slope, it would be extremely hard to put a secondary exit on the backside of that building on the first floor. Yes, sir?
Robert Blanchard, 622 Elders Street. I know all, I know a lot of everybody that's in this room right now. We all come from different backgrounds. We all come from different points of view. I think, as I'm listening to all of these universally, I think that the thing I'm hearing universally is, "The city has screwed up City Hall for twelve years. Let's give it over to the Friends of City Hall and give them a shot at doing it." The conversations that I've had with a lot of friends and family and people my age, the under-forty crowd, they're at the point where they're like, "You know what? It's time to move on. It's time to try doing something different, because the same status quo of setting and talking about it's not working." So, if the Friends of City Hall have avenues in which to do it, give them ten years. What do we have to lose, really? I think it's a wise decision. On that same front, though, as we're talking about ADA compliances and, you know, business model for the city, I think it's very important for us, for everybody, to think about what we're leaving behind for my kids. And, I mean, I really enjoy the historic buildings, and I find them, you know, very nice. And there's some magnificent structures that are privately owned that are kept up a lot better than the publicly-owned historic buildings in this town. And personally, as we look at the fact that we've got a fire hall, we'll omit the fire hall for right now, because it's a fire authority, but we got a police station, we have the DPW building, we have the City Hall, and we have the Guy Center. That's four different sets of phones. That's four different heating and cooling systems. That's, if we consolidate everything into one location, it would make a lot more sense to me to be giving this town the best option to move forward. If we sold off the police station, that is prime real estate that could be going to a business that could be paying tax dollars every year for their property taxes. Before, it was a police station. It was a building. Yes, it changed hands several times, but there was still property taxes brought in off from that. Same thing with the DPW. The DPW is a nice building, but realistically, if we built a complex or built something where we were able to house everything, you know, we wouldn't, we could streamline city government by massive functions to be able to keep everything in one central location. And the location that I think of right off the get-go is, there's over twenty-three acres sitting out off from King Road that our water tower is sitting on. That location right there would be a great location. We could go from four or five parking lots to one parking lot. We could go from DPW building that has an old, the old heating system in it, to something newer, greener, something that is going to be more efficient for... And our police department, we don't even, we have, what? Two-hundred thousand dollars' worth of police cars sitting out in the snow right now, because we don't even have a garage to put the police cars into? Or a place for them to be able to pull a vehicle in if they have to work on something, some type of evidence or something like that in the wintertime? I mean, when they were out at King Road, they at least had a garage that they could pull evidence, vehicles in, and stuff like that. So, I mean, something, just throwing this out there amongst all of you guys to think about is, you know, if we took and took a good, long look at all of the different things that this city does and the things and the people that we have, you know, to be able to bring one building, build one building that would house everything, and if any changes happen to ADA compliance or anything like that, you would have one facility to upgrade, not five. Right now, you have multiples. You have multiple efficiencies in heating and cooling. You have multiple units for Mike to work on all the time for the different facilities. It makes a lot of sense in my book. And I don't know exactly how we could go about funding it, but, I mean, that's part of bringing this to you guys' ideas, is, "Hey, let's look at this, and if it makes sense." I mean, how much money did we dump into the police station to build the, or to rebuild it after the, when it was the movie theater and now where it's at now? It's just food for thought, I guess.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to expand on what Bob said about we should consider, what is the value in the future so that we build for longevity? One just has to look... One just has to look at public buildings that have come and gone in our lifetime. The palace, the silver dome, municipal buildings down in the city. Unfortunately, we build two codes that don't seem to really hold things together very long. We have a building that has endured for a hundred years and is a good foundation. There's probably a very good chance that they made mistakes in building the Guy Center, and it's pretty strong. That concept is an interesting thing to consider, since what we're doing now is just putting out ideas. I, I think the city should have a committee formed to actually follow through on some of these concepts so that it doesn't just stop. But we should look what will carry on through into the future. And fifty-year, forty-year construction, most of us won't care. But what are we passing on, other than a bill? Thank you.
Oh, well, there's just a couple thoughts I had. I'm, you know, I'm a lot older than this guy here, he's younger than my son, but I agree with him. It's like, um, I've lived here twenty years, half of that time we haven't had a City Hall. And this turmoil's just gone on for so many years, it's like, I'd like to put it in the past and move forward with something different. Um, we have, just in, just, you know, the ten years, we just keep adding to the buildings we own here. I mean, we added on to our library, and, you know, China doesn't have a library, Cotterville doesn't have a library, China, uh, China doesn't have a library, oh no, they come use ours, but we're responsible for that building. We not be, may not be responsible for the operation of that building, but we're responsible to maintain it. And it was ten years ago, put in, and they said, well, we have a really great building for ten years. Because I was against that, um, add-on. Well, it's already been ten years, so in ten years, we're gonna have to start, you know, putting roofs on and things like that on it. And that can't come from TIPA funds at that point, because TIPA can only do new stuff. They can't, that, that wouldn't be within their, um, program. So we've added on to the library, we have, um, we have a new, a different police station, we're still working on City Hall, and we put, you know, F, almost a half a million dollars in there. Um, we have a museum, we have the Guy Center, we own a cemetery. For a town of just a little over four thousand people, we own a lot of things here. And it is, they're all, he's, he's right, they're all wrapped around, and we're running all kinds of different places for them. And, uh, I don't know how we can support it. And maybe the downtown's looking great, although, you know, there's still empty buildings down there. Even where the new streetscape is, there, the, the Pita Pub's empty, there's an auto, a former auto place, been empty almost, uh, twenty years. There's the auto store still empty, I, on Water, on, uh, on Water Street, Millers, the old Millers is still empty. So there's still, um, buildings empty down there, but really, what concerns me is all the factories empty in, on Degursey, or all the factories empty on King Road, or the factories empty in Chartiers, on Chartier. We have a lot of empty real estate here, that we have lost a lot, not only in the last twenty years, but in the last ten, and even in the last five. We have a lot of empty buildings here, for all the progress that we've had in downtown, that's on just the fringes. But you go out, you know, where I live, on King Road, and everything's emptying, and emptying, and emptying some more. And it's like, I, I wonder, like, for this generation, where are these kids around here gonna work? With college educations or not, where are they gonna work? There's nothing here, you know, there's nothing here anymore. And this, and, and I'm very concerned, and with all the real retail closing, like, every day I open the paper and a Target's closing, a Penny's is closing, Sears is closing, Walmarts are closing, K-Mart's are closing, Macy's is closing up at the mall. If we ever lose our K-Mart here, we're gonna lose our bookend store. It's like, just how much more, other than the downtown, can the rest of the town take? I mean, we just keep losing. So, um, I, and I, I don't know that it's beneficial to all this, that I, I wonder who wants to come in here and invest in, in taking one of these factories, or taking one of these buildings and doing something else? Because on one hand, uh, they're competing against people that are getting all these grants in these TIPA areas. And so they're like, why do I wanna put my dime in? Because they can go into that area and get their money from TIPA. So I don't know if that always works to our advantage. And on the other hand, um, and, you know, it depends upon, a lot of these areas, we, you know, on Parker, hardly anything benefited from, no business has gotten money in from Parker. We put the police station in with money from TIPA, and we put the library in from T, for money from TIPA, but no business has gotten any money. That's all gone to the downtown area, where we've put, you know, given them money for the, to improve their apartments that are then turning around and competing for rental, for apartments that, um, other people are putting private dollars in. So I get really concerned, but everybody's been talking about the downtown.
I understand.
So. So, so I, what, what concerns me is, you know, all the rest of the town. It's not just about the downtown, and, you know, to say that the City Hall's in the heart of the downtown, that isn't even in the middle of the city, we're in the middle of the city right here.
If you go on the map, actually, that is a very center, to say no. Do it online.
Okay.
But I, 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 I'm concerned about all the real estate we own, and all the, you know, I, I just don't know how, how the bedroom community can keep paying for all these buildings our city has. But I am with him, I'm, I'm tired of it, I'm tired of it all. I'm tired that we just don't have some solution here. Now, or the solution that has been brought here, the solution that we have, is that everything's doing great, and look at how great downtown's doing, so now give us another ten years, and you guys just suffer in the buildings you're in, and give us another ten years, or twelve years, to restore that old building. I'll be dead before we ever get, you know, in there, I think, but, uh, maybe you'll see it. You probably got a better chance of seeing it than I do.
Would like to speak now. Yeah, if there's no one else.
Hey.
I got maybe something thought-provoking that hopefully gets maybe another side of this story. When we originally talked about, uh, the, the possibility of having this meeting a while back, one of the things I brought up, and something I heard a bit about, is, not necessarily talking about buildings, yes, we have some concerns about Guy Center, three hundred Broadway, that type of thing. But what we're really talking about in all of this, and Bob, what you, you sort of touched on this, is, is how we render services to citizens of this city. And that's the big picture, and I think if we look at that, there could be some non-traditional ways that we solve this. You know, at the time I brought up, um, you can solve ADA compliance by using some of our, um, other buildings that are more ADA compliant, maybe on a one- or two-day, a week basis, uh, for citizens to access those for certain services. So, you know, if we think of it outside of the box, there, there are also other ways that, that we can solve this. And so I kind of put it out there at the time, that if we think about just how we render services, and the cost to render service or access to individuals that may not be able to do steps or just any given thing, some people don't drive, and so walkability is a concern. So I've maybe put that out to the group, that, you know, if we stop thinking about physical buildings and locations, can we think about looking toward the future of how services are rendered? We know things tend to be more digital, we, we know whether you like them or not, you can find all kinds of forms and things online, and you can email and fax things, I know, you know, at the state level, you can't even really do a whole lot of paper copy things anymore, you know, as, as a citizen. So we know that that's part of the future, it's not all the future, but, so we know that, that's gonna change, and as a city, we're gonna have to adapt to that, but I, I would put that out to the group, is, if anyone has any thoughts about how we can adapt maybe some of our physical processes, not just locations and real estate, to better serve citizens.
Another point I've also, we, we don't, we need, I think, more shared space, instead of a pigeonhole, a building that's just for City Hall, or just for, and I think a shared space idea between not just municipal operations, but, you know, other groups that can, that need space, that we need to work together on it, instead of having a standalone City Hall.
Back, this is going on probably fifteen years ago, when I was in college, I was working for an electrician, electrical company, um, during the summers and stuff like that, and that was, uh, a big part of my job at that point in time was, uh, we were renovating the Branch County, uh, courthouse down in Branch County. Um, it was a multi-million dollar renovation of a county building. Um, we, you know, went through and rewired the entire thing for Wi-Fi, the whole nine yards. Our, um, and, uh, the, the thing that really, you know, struck a chord with me was, they, when the architects went into that building, they, they did a lot to preserve what was there, but they did a lot to, um, put their own flair on it, and, uh, bring this thing, you know, up into, uh, a modern-day, uh, basically palace. Um, the thing of it is, though, is, um, by the time we were done, the inside of that building didn't resemble in any way, shape, or form what was there originally, um, because of how much had to be changed in order to be able to make HVA systems work, make, uh, the, um, you know, uh, hallways wide enough, the, the doorways big enough, there's just so many things had to happen, which I, being part of something like that and have worked on things like that in my past, um, I, I can foresee that, you know, our city government, um, City Hall is definitely a very important focal point in the middle of town that, you know, has a lot of charm and a lot of, uh, significance to it. And it's tied to a lot of people's emotions. Um, whether or not we'll ever get back in there, I don't know, I, I don't know it, but I foresee this lease with, uh, the Friends of City Hall, you know, a, a good step to trying to do something like that, but I also see the importance of, you know, trying to build a new, uh, facility that we could take and, uh, do shared spaces or meeting rooms like this, that we could, you know, use for, the Parks and Recs Department needs to be able to use space for, you know, Pilates or yoga or whatever, you know, if they have a facility, you know, we're not constantly going over to the school and renting space from them. I mean, there's a lot of stuff, we already got a complex, we've got acreage sitting right there. It makes a lot of sense. Uh, whether or not it's in the middle of town, I, I can't talk whether or not that's important to me in any way, shape, or form, because everybody drives to all these different locations for everything they gotta do in this town anyways. Whether it's stopping over to the police station, or going uptown, or over here, or whatever. So, um, the, the focus of it physically being in town, the park is in town. So, my two cents.
Charles Signory, two-two-four North Elizabeth. I'm gonna stand, because I have a bad cold also. Um, I like what Bob's saying, um, it makes a lot of sense. Financially, can we do it? That's what we have to look at. I, I would suggest to the city manager and the commission, you guys put timeline, get a subcommittee, and stick to a timeline, not twelve years, and so this is open-ended. There is nothing here that commits nobody. And I don't mean to sound harsh or whatever, but we need to put a six-month time limit and say, okay, we're gonna come back in three months, and we're gonna do this, and do our homework, do our due diligence. Couple things that you guys need to look at, I think. I like, I live on North Elizabeth, I go past that City Hall, I think it's gorgeous. I do like it, I like the park setting, I like everything about it. I think it, it's good that we're leasing it out, I think that Friends of City Hall should have part of a lease to that. I'm really going that way with that, myself. Um, Guy Center shouldn't be a City Hall. I'm sorry, guys. We need to look at the properties that we own. You have a fire hall here, you have a police department three blocks down, you have a DPW, another two or three blocks down. I think you need to be in this area. You three, those three buildings come up the south for City Hall. This side of town needs help, that side, that's our little diamond in the rough over there, it's almost complete. You got homes on this side of your diamond that needs help. And this side here is another diamond in the rough. All your citizens here, and your businesses shop here, your people shop, you know, it's, this is it. They don't go downtown to shop, there's nothing down to but restaurants, and a few clothing stores and a sweet tooth. Here you get gas, you drive down here every day, you gotta come down here to shop. You gotta go to K-Mart, you gotta go to BG's. This is where it's at. If you gotta do a police report, you should come in down here, your fire department's down here. City Hall needs to be over here, add-on to DPW, there's some property there. Keep your meetings here, if that's what you have to, I'm against it. I think you should have a, a nice complex. Figure out how you're gonna buy, how are you gonna pay for it? Figure it out, be in six months from now, so come back in June, let's have a, have a plan. Three months from now, back in April, uh, excuse me, March, let's get back together and say, okay, where are we at here, how far have we gone? Where's the subcommittee, is there any citizens, anybody, who wants to be part of that? We need to come up with a plan, not for just this, but the whole city, our roads, our infrastructure, everything. We need to have subcommittees, guys, we need to find out where we're going. Like Bob's saying, our kids have, you know, they're in the future, we're all old. But we need to come up with a plan. I think the Guy Center could be a rec center, I think Friends of City Hall can make that a great visitor center with weddings up, stairs, whatever. I, I don't know the answers, don't get rid of it. I think that they, these people have a great, great plan. But I think that we need to not add more properties, more work for Mike, consolidate if we can, but we gotta find out how we're gonna pay for it. Thank you.
Uh, Gary Gray, six-ten North Mary Street. Um, I also like the idea of, of Friends of City Hall leasing that building and doing some things with that. As I've, I've been listening to what people have been saying here, and, and Bob, you made, Bob, right? Made a great deal of sense. What, what came to my mind, and a lady over here had mentioned that we had a bedroom community. And, and we have a really pretty community, I, I agree with you, it is, it's gorgeous. But I, for our kids' sakes and the future's sakes, I think we need to show people that we are not just a bedroom, we are very bright. We, we have some very bright people in this town. And, and this town, um, if we were going to consolidate buildings, and I like the idea of bringing all services to one, that makes sense to me, but if you're going to do it, I think invest, or at least taking the time to see, how do we do this and show people that we are not ju, it's a start of the, it's a state-of-the-art building? I mean, this is environmentally green, it's solar-powered, it's whatever it is to be, to pull some grant money if it's that way. Do it that way and show people that, yep, we have a quaint little town, but we're pretty bright here. And we got state-of-the-art stuff too, to bring in the future kids. Because digitally, it's going, we know it's going digitally. I'm sorry, it is, it's going to, and we need to start drawing some of that business. There's, I mean, I just saw something, was it the Roost up in Port Huron? Bringing some of those young businesses in there digitally. If we can do that, even with that type of a building, leasing out parts of it, that's, that has, um, all the technology that is new and ready to go, I think it's a nice idea, but I think it shows people, uh, to me, that we're more than that. We are more than that, there's a lot going on here, and I, I just think we have really bright people in this town. I do, I think it's just a very innovative, forward-moving town. And I understand that maybe in the last twelve years, they haven't moved forward too much, I get it. But I think you are, and I think you're really making nice progress, I, I like the way this town's going. But I think now we need to also think of the future, and how do we go for even further? And show people, look what we got, we're, we're more than that. That's it.
Yes, Mr. Jenkins?
Kind of think that you have to kind of look at short-term here first.
I kind of think that you have to kind of look at short-term here first. What's been discussed here tonight, a lot of it is grandiose, which is fine, you know, a plan for the future too, but to me, I can understand why you could lease the, the old City Hall to the Friends of City Hall, all right, that just puts that safely in a, in a box. It's, it's going to have something done to it, whether it takes ten years, whether it takes four years, whether it takes twenty years, but at least there's somebody there that's in charge and taking care of that building. These people are raising money all the time, so that kind of settles that. So now it's the city, what, what are they going to do? I would suggest you get an architect over to walk through the Guy Center and just see what it's going to take to make it ADA. I mean, those guys definitely think out of the box. They'll, he'll walk around in that building and figure something out, and he'll keep it in a budget, or he'll tell you, ah, it's going to be too much, you can't, you can't do it to this building. But if that happens, you either eliminate that possibility of staying there, or you, you push forward and say, okay, we don't have to stay here forever, but we have to make it ADA, so that we have some time to save some money to make these complexes with these, the DPW, or join up with however you want to set up the city operations, or build a new City Hall. But in the meantime, you know what it's going to cost and what, what you have to do to make the Guy Center work. So that, that kind of, at least temporarily, I know everybody wants to get this over with, but you're talking some major money, I'm a builder, and you're talking some major money to build complexes and even a new City Hall at this point, where you can just kind of settle this thing, your ADA, it's, it's downtown, it's, it's not the best facility, but it's, it's comfortable, it's a lot more comfortable than what they were in in the old City Hall when it, when it was all wrecked, but that'd be a consideration. Well, it would take us a few phone calls and get some other opinions.
This town has about four thousand people. Ten years ago, it had about four thousand people. I think if we go back twenty years, I think estimate for ten years from now, where are we going to put any more than four thousand people? So, four thousand people get to pay for whatever we want to do and what size government we need. So our plans ought to be very consistent with how much are we prepared to spend to have different. We know we have to spend something because we've been temporary for twelve years, but anything else we're proposing is extra. Thank you.
We've got a return on investment to look at. I mean, you spend X millions of dollars, you have to make sure there's a return on investment, that the, when the, when we're said and done, that the actual service provided out of that building is worth more than what we've moved out of, so. Yeah. Go ahead.
Lot of, lot of good ideas tonight. I like things I've heard from Bob here, enthusiasm for the, for the town here. Terry's hit the nail on the head. Regardless of what we decide to do, we have to pay for it. And as I've said on the newer, on numerous occasions, we don't have the wherewithal at this point to do that. Where is the money going to come from? I think in addition to having a subcommittee, or I, I prefer task forces to committees, dedicated to what we need to do in terms of our, our infrastructure, we need to have a task force dedicated to how we are going to fund this city as a whole and these ideas in particular. We need to think outside the box financially. We are entrenched in this idea that we are participating in a failing economy, or at least a depressed economy. My mother used to ask me, if everybody was jumping off the roof, would you do that too? We do not have to participate in a negative economy. We can choose to do it differently. We can choose to think outside of the box, and we need to do that. Otherwise, we're, we're stuck in the same place, no matter what ideas we come up with, how are we going to pay for it? Whether we use TIFA, don't use, you know, all these arguments aside, we don't have the current tax base to do the things that we need to do in terms of keeping the, the ground under us with the, with the roads and the sidewalks and the, and the sewer systems and things like that. So we need to start thinking outside the box. We need to refuse to participate in the same old ways of doing business as a city and come up with some ideas that will generate not just a grant, we need to generate revenue on a steady basis. It doesn't have to be a millage. There are, there are any number of things that, that we might be able to come up with if we start thinking that way.
I was here when, when this all went down to begin with, and when they first started with that, they wanted to do a bond, they wanted a tax increase, and it went to the vote of people, and they turned it down. I think you're at the same, you're, you're at the same level as you were back there looking at the finances, and if, if the people don't want it and they don't want to help you get there, then no matter how much you, you get your wish list, you're not going to get it.
I wanted to speak in support of what Keith observed, who's missing, about bringing in an architect to look at Guy Center. I tried to do research on the history of Guy Center, and the city no longer has any paperwork on file. It's simply not there, so I wasn't able to trace it back very far, but when Detroit had us and built that structure, I think we can kind of be assured that it was a bit like a brick shithouse. So I, I think the architect and/or engineer, whoever, will come up with some very positive thoughts about the strength of the building. And secondly, Heather's observation, she was talking about a porch lift, and Michael Kirk, who is the certified historical architect that's working on City Hall, talked to us about porch lifts and suggested that a small one, which might be ripe for Guy Center, can be had for approximately ten thousand.
Bill Daniels, 206 West Minister Street, Marine City. I, I agree with his thought about the committee. For instance, this building here, you know how it got started? I chaired the building authority committee. Basically, it was set up to house the new fire truck that the city was going, it was ordered, but didn't have a place to put it. I had a great committee. They were thinking beyond. I, I kept on thinking, well, it was more or less just house the truck, but a couple committee members kept on thinking, look at, we are also serving Contra Ville, part of China, East Contra Ville, and here, we ended up recommending the construction of a new fire hall, and it was to be west of Bell River because of the areas that we served as well. And so I, the city commission didn't put it to a vote of the people. It did not pass by a big margin, but I haven't heard one complaint about this building being here. And the money, I don't know what the total cost, it was, yeah, but we are proud now of our fire hall, aren't we? I haven't heard one complaint, and I feel good inside that we have this fire hall. Every time I go by here, I think she was, I had a part in it. So I think what you have to do is, someone said, look at what you need. For instance, you need parking to have a facility. You need to come up with the ADA. We need place, like for a handicap bathroom in a facility, maybe on one floor, or easy access up to like this, maybe the City Hall and, or, or another building. Make it so that, set up some of the guidelines that you are looking for, parking, ADA accessible, and, and one thing I think to emphasize, because I think maybe we all face it some one of these days, make sure you have a handicap bathroom, that's a good nice facility and so on. And I think when you look at this building, I think, I hope, I won't see it my age, but I'm sure this building will be here another fifty, a hundred years. And so I think what we have to look at, what the facilities we need, and I think here or this, I think, I like the city managers recommend to look at it, and some of the things to look at, storage facilities and so on. And so I like the idea, and I enjoy, every time I go by that City Hall, I, I feel pretty good inside, because I was born here in Marine City, the house in which I was born is still standing on Metropolis Street. My wife and I live in the same house in which she was born, and after I got out of the Navy, off active duty, came back to Marine City, and I haven't left. And luckily, I've had an opportunity to live elsewhere. My first ship was based in Pearl Harbor, second ship in San Diego, California, so I had an opportunity plus some other travels, so on. So I think, and I don't get, the only thing, I think, you, you mentioned a number of people. Don't forget, you look back, when I was a kid, the families were a lot larger too, most cases that I know of. And so now, and more and more of my friends are moving into condos and apartments. That's sort of the trend of the future, and so you're going to have a certain number of, you know, housing units, maybe available homes and so on, but you look at the number of condos, even in Marine City, and the apartments. So the whole atmosphere has changed as far as people standing, and we've created some of our own problems. Look at downtown now, the lost, the lost, I guess I shouldn't use apartments, and, and you're going to, I think, see more of those as time goes by. When some of the stores, but maybe put a second store on, and you'll have different living facilities. So I think we want to make sure we have a positive attitude, and we'll, we'll arrive there. I, maybe I won't see it my age, and not only that, the other thing is, I think there's a legal requirement as far as providing a community center. If you check that out, I think there's a legal requirement there as far as providing a facility. It didn't say it necessarily were a city hall, and so I think that's one thing that you have to take that into consideration, and I think we could come up with some pretty good ideas to throw around, and I think maybe get a committee going and get some people involved who would like to serve and look at all these different aspects. Thank you.
Anyone else like? Hearing none.
Just one quick thing, just what he, what he touched on about a community center. That was kind of also part of the comment of this is that, because we are in the existing community center, is a community center something that we still feel that we need, or is it something that maybe has already served through other means, like say Washington Life Center, or moving forward with River Rec Teen Zone? So if, say, we were to stay in the Guy Center, what would we do about a community center?
I think we've had some great ideas tonight, but I think, I think in the next few months, you're going to see something out of this commission. One way or another, we're going to do something. I mean, I've been here my whole life and this has been, you know, and I was here when they, we moved the police department in here for months, and we had to live with them.
Was that bad?
I was hoping it didn't look like, but I think we've gone through challenges, but it's time to make us, make some decisions, and I think in the next few meetings, in the next few months, you're going, we're going to come up with something. And I think it's, I'm hoping we can come up with a good long-term strategy, and I think we're going to take a lot of the different ideas we've heard tonight and shared spaces and, you know, you know, redundancy, avoid some of the redundancies that we may have now. So with that, I know we had a survey pamphlet, but I think we're going to just move on because I don't think it's going to work the way I kind of envisioned it. I think it was a test. After I thought about it, I don't think it was a very good suggestion.
Oh, come on. So you don't want to know. So you don't want to.
No, it's the way, the numeric way of actually calculating and verifying it, the, in the timeframe we have, I think, and not being able to quantify it the way we put it together, I, I don't really, I think we need to work on it, but anyway.
Do we know how many square feet are needed, like ideally, for City Hall? Like, what is your ideal?
Currently, the Guy Center, between the floor where our offices are and the storage that we have downstairs, the square footage is about five thousand square feet.
So what ideally do you want?
With that being said, there's a lot of wasted space because there's corridors around vehicles, the storage downstairs, there are a lot of other things that can be optimized to make the storage work better. I, I can't really give you a number, but if I, I mean, I would think that we could probably scale it down considerably.
Yes, and then the storage for the basement, it needs to be updated. The wooden shell pallet shelving isn't probably the most ideal for use of storage in today's...
What do you store now, though? It's all on little...
No, we still have to keep the paper on there, and we have paper, but we need to go with the movable shelf system in that we can really diminish that extremely.
I know that shortly after this thing was announced, I did end up looking it up a little bit, and just going from like Google Earths and squaring in the boxes for how big the different buildings are. The Guy Center was like close to, you know, twenty, right around twenty-five hundred square feet or something like that, just for the, the top view of it, and then the police department was about the same size. So realistically, you know, I, at first I was looking at, you know, the possibility, given the fact that the DPW, the size of the parking lot and the space there, you know, whether or not we could add fifteen thousand square feet to the DPW building. But then you still have a lot of issues that you, tying in to the old and the new and the expense there. So that's part of where I, you know, evolved into, but.